Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. My colleagues on City Council, city staff, and welcome guests. Happy holidays and welcome to our public work session for today, December 12th. And I would ask Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes.
President.
Mr. Hugo.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Mr. Tillage.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
President.
Mayor Glover.
Here.
I will now turn the meeting over to our interim City Manager, Ms. Terry. And ma'am, you have the floor.
Today, we're going to start our presentations with the Portsmouth Innovation District. I just want to say, Brian Swett is going to give the presentation, but just for the acknowledgement of council and just for everyone's sitting here today, the innovation funds from the RACE grant is going to be about 18 months before that funding is available. And so, a lot of times, we think we got the grant so we can start immediately on that fund, but I just want to, as a, just a disclosure, that those funds have not been received, so we're in the process of getting this done now. Thank you. And Brian Swett, please come, start the presentation.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you all for having, is this on? Thank you all for having me tonight. I'm really excited to talk to you about this project that Planning and Economic Development have been working on for the last year and a half or so, the Innovation District here in Portsmouth. I want to talk to you about three topics. I want to talk about what is an Innovation District and what is the Innovation District here in Portsmouth, the goals that we have for the district, and finally, and most importantly, want to roll out some of the recommendations in the soon-to-be-released plan for the district and get you all's feedback on those recommendations. So first, some context where we're talking about, this is the Innovation District in Portsmouth. This currently exists, it's in the zoning ordinance, it's been created, it has very few rules and regulations at this point, but it is here. It's here because we have a lot of land that we control here. The land in green is land that's owned directly by the city. The parcels in purple are land that's owned by the Economic Development Authority, or at least controlled by the Economic Development Authority. Beyond that, there's a lot of vacant parcels in the district that are open for redevelopment. There's a lot of underutilized parcels that are open for redevelopment, so there's a lot of opportunity out here. That is our Innovation District, but what is an Innovation District? So usually, when you hear this term, it refers to an area that has some sort of mega employment center. It has a tech company, a university, a research hospital, something that creates a large number of jobs, but then because of their innovative nature, they tend to create a lot of new economic activity. They come up with new ideas through research and development, and that attracts new businesses, new entrepreneurs who fill those gaps, fill those voids with new jobs to support these new ideas that they've got. But we don't really have that, do we? This is the Innovation District. This is High Street looking down west towards the Martin Luther King Connector. This is just essentially a NASCAR track right now, four lanes of nothing. This is not a bad thing. This is an opportunity for us to take advantage of, and we think that we have a good idea for how to do that. So in order to go from what is a traditional Innovation District to one that makes sense here in Portsmouth, we did a couple of things. First, we worked with a consulting firm to do tons of data gathering and analysis to learn more about Portsmouth, learn more about Portsmouth's economy, learn more specifically about the people and the economies here in the district. And then, we went out and we did a lot of public research. Councilman Hugo, Mayor Glover, you both have been excellent attendants at these meetings. You've seen the activity and you've seen the excitement that we've had. We also had more individualized stakeholder interviews where we identified especially developers and business owners in the district to talk about their experiences, to talk about what they're looking for, talk about holes in the market, again, so we can get a better feel for what makes sense out there. And in the end, what we found was that even though we have this vacant area, we are really excited because we think we have an opportunity to build on our biggest asset, that's our people here in Portsmouth. So in order to do that, in order to create this district where we're building on these people, we have four main goals. The first is that we want to grow our own jobs. Portsmouth is not in a position where we have large amounts of cash that we can go and we can buy our economic development, where we can buy a business to come into the city. Instead, we would like to focus on investing that money into individuals, investing that money into infrastructure that then supports more entrepreneurial growth here in the city. In order to do that, we're looking at two main categories. We want to invest in infrastructure and we want to invest in collaboration. The infrastructure, we're starting to do already, the manager mentioned the streetscape on High Street where we've got these grants to do the work. We don't have the money in hand yet, but we will be getting that money, and so that is a project that we can count on. We've got our fiber ring that has been installed, even though it hasn't been turned on, but that's an opportunity right there. We have affordable housing that's being built in the district. This is the Woda property for about 50 units on the corner of High and Elm. We've also got additional, almost 50 units, and townhouses on the south side of High Street, just down to the right on this picture here, so we're bringing more people into the district. But we do have some things we need to be concerned with. When we spoke with people from the district, these are the things that they said were threats to opportunities here in the Innovation District, and the biggest one was crime. So we know that this is something that needs to be addressed if we want to be successful out here, and we think that we can design our infrastructure in such a way that will help to passively eliminate crime, or at least ameliorate some of the crime that we're seeing in there to attract more people to the area. And finally, we want to be creating spaces for young entrepreneurs to have space to not only grow business, but to sell their products, which then attracts more people and creates more excitement. The second part I mentioned was collaboration. This is important for growing, you know, we got to teach people exactly how they need to be moving forward. A lot of people have ideas, but they don't know how to get to where they want to go. So looking for opportunities for collaboration, looking for opportunities for mentorship, looking for opportunities for coworking. These are all ways that we can help young people take an idea and turn it into a successful business. Those businesses, and a lot of times, are local businesses, and I use that word specifically, you know, draw your attention to something like Waterside in Portsmouth, right? That's more of a regional thing. You get a developer who comes in from the outside, who then attracts chain businesses to create an area that could really, pretty much exist anywhere. You could open your eyes in the middle of Waterside, you could be here, you could be in Kansas City, you wouldn't really know the difference. We are looking at creating something that's attractive to Portsmouth residents and Portsmouth citizens, invest in those, so that we are putting our money into our own community, and that money stays in our community. We've got IC Norcom, that's right here in the district. We have TCC down the street. We have Norfolk State and ODU that are five-minute drives away. There is a ton of talent that is right here in the region that we can draw from, we just have to be mindful and concerted in how we do it. Our second goal is this idea of creating what we've been calling the greenest street in Hampton Roads. This is the new streetscape along High Street, and while we'll be doing more of the design work in the future through public meetings and such, there are some things that we know that we want to have. For example, we want to plant street trees to help beautify the district. We've got a shared-use path for bicycles and pedestrians along the south side of High Street. This would be a part of the leg of the South Hampton Roads Trail, which runs about 40 miles from Driver and Suffolk, all the way to the oceanfront in Virginia Beach. Some of you may be aware of the Rails Trail Project going on in Churchill right now. That's going across the northern half of the city. This would help connect in the southern half of the city. This would take us from about the Martin Luther King Connector down to downtown, where you can then get, ride to the ferry, take the ferry, get over to Elizabeth River Trail, you can ride all the way to the oceanfront in Virginia Beach. We are deliberately putting this off of the road because we're trying to attract people who do not wear branded spandex when they ride a bike. We're looking for parents who don't feel comfortable riding the bike, you know, on the street with their children, something like that. We are reducing the number of travel lanes to slow cars down, to improve safety. We are, essentially, we're making this a street for everyone, not just a street for cars. We want to introduce green infrastructure into this new streetscape, for example, street trees. We can't, we heard a lot of complaints from business owners that trees, you know, can damage the sidewalks, damages, damage the buildings, but we can construct the infrastructure in such a way that the root systems stay contained where we want them to, while also having drains in the street or in the curbs, so water feeds directly into the tree, so you're helping to absorb some stormwater, while also doing good things for the environment. And speaking of the environment, one of the things that we really heard from people during our public meetings was that they wanted to see sustainability put into this new streetscape and into this district. So looking at things like introducing pervious pavements where they're appropriate, finding renewable energy sources like solar, looking for more multimodal transit operations, you know, so that might be bike share or scooters. But these are all ways that we can introduce ideas, again, that make this a street for all people and not just a street for cars. That kind of investment goes a long way to creating a place that people want to live, but there's other things than just a streetscape. Public art, for example. This is an example of a mural from south side of Chicago. It was inspired by a mural from 1967, The Wall of Hope, which was, is considered to be the catalyst for the use of murals and the Civil Rights Movement as a way of propagating the idea that black people are equal to white people, too. This is something that is incorporating multiple artists, incorporates multiple media, incorporates the history of the community. We want to take this kind of idea and show that the community has hopes and values and ideals, and we can express them in a way that's positive, in a way that attracts people, in a way that lifts people up, and shows what a great place this is to live. While doing that, we want to protect the people and the businesses who are currently here in the district. So the zoning rules that we'll be looking at changing, none of that will in any way impact the ability of people who live there currently, or people who have businesses, to live in their house, to expand or renovate their house, to operate their existing business, to expand or operate their existing business. We are keeping, we have made promises to people that we intend to keep, that we are not looking to change the way that they operate now. I want to be very clear about that. Hopefully, by doing this, one of the things that we can do is we can improve the incomes for people who live here in Portsmouth. We know from our research that the highest-paying jobs in Portsmouth disproportionately go to people who live outside of the city and commute into it. By helping to build up entrepreneurial ideas, we're building jobs that are good-paying, jobs that if we invest in people, hopefully, they will want to stay in Portsmouth out of a sense of loyalty. So again, we, as we invest, we are keeping that money here in the community. And this is building on the most important foundation of this plan, which is equity. This district here was redlined back in the '30s, was literally labeled as a hazardous place to be by the federal government, which led to a massive lack of investment. And you can see that in things like the lack of trees out there. This is a map of tree canopy coverage. There are essentially no trees in the district. That makes it one of the hottest locations in the city while also being one of the poorest. The idea that as climate change leads to higher temperatures, that people who are most susceptible to things like increased heating and cooling costs, this will help to ameliorate that kind of thing. It'll help to make it a more attractive place to live, but it also benefits the people who are living there currently. I mentioned things like crime, but this place is also unsafe just to drive and walk on. This is a map of crash data from 2015 to 2022, and you can see along High Street, there's a disproportionate number of injuries, fatal and severe injuries, on a road that doesn't have a whole lot of people driving on it anymore after the Martin Luther King Connector, which has taken a lot of traffic off of High Street. So that new streetscape is something that can help to make it a safer place for people who are walking and biking, as well as people who are driving there. We also want to bring more health and services to people in Portsmouth, and specifically people in the district. Currently, Portsmouth has about two-thirds the number of general practitioners as the rest of the Hampton Roads region. It gets even worse when we look at other health care providers, other doctors. You start looking at only about 50% of the number, per capita, of other health practitioners compared to the rest of the Hampton Roads region. That's not something that's right, and that's something that we think that the Innovation District can help to solve. We also are looking, again, as I said, investing at people in the district, because, like I said, there's a lot of talent here. Rodrick Hawthorne on the left, Michael Fletcher on the right, who are both here in the audience today. These are two guys who I've got to meet through this process, who I feel incredibly fortunate to get a chance to talk to every time, every time we meet. They're exciting, they're expire, inspiring, expiring, they're inspiring. These are Norcom grads who are highly successful world-traveling professionals. Rodrick, on the left, has worked on ad campaigns for Vogue magazine. Michael has worked on Nike's shoe line with Travis Scott. Those are cool things, but what's more interesting about them is how they want to give back to their community. Rodrick has been working with Beats to provide opportunities for people, for college students who are introduced, who are interested in production, to make commercials. Michael is working with Foot Locker to help educate kids and teach kids how to design shoes. Imagine if we could draw on this kind of talent and this kind of knowledge to inform and teach and mentor and inspire the next generation of kids who are coming up out of Portsmouth. These are the types of people that we should be investing in, because they are the types of people who have the connections both with outside businesses, but with kids and young entrepreneurs that inspire and help grow and make this an exciting place to be. Okay, so that's the quick run-through of kind of the background of the plan. Now, I want to get into the recommendations that are becoming in the plan, and these are especially the types of things that we want to get your feedback on. So, the first part, we've broken this down into kind of three areas. On the right side of the Innovation District, we have a place we're calling the Maker Square. In the center, well, it's supposed to be a Health and Wellness Center, and then on the right, the MLK Gateway. And so, we're going to take these one section at a time. The first is the Maker Square. The Maker Square is built around this concept of something called a makerspace. And what is a makerspace? I assume a lot of you are familiar with the idea of a coworking space, where you go in, you rent an office, and that gives you access to office supplies, office technology, office infrastructure, without having, you know, to be employed by a business. You can have your own business operating out of one of these spaces, like, for example, Bloom on High Street, or Incub Hub. Makerspace is kind of like the blue-collar version of that. Imagine a place where you could go in and you could rent a workshop or a workspace and have access to any manner of tool that you can think of. So if you're an artist, maybe there's a potter's wheel in there for you. Glassblowing, 3D printing, laser cutting. I've seen guys working as auto mechanics and things like this. Fashion design. There's a guy in Virginia Beach in Pembroke Mall who teaches people how to be influencers, and I don't mean like how to come up with a cool hashtag or something. He teaches you video production, lighting, sound, editing. All of these kinds of things, you could put into an industrial-type warehouse, build it out, and then you give people an opportunity to have either, say, a membership, where you come in and for a monthly fee, you've got access to your own workspace and then access to the tools that are in there. You give an opportunity for classes for people who live in the community. This is especially popular for, say, people in their twenties, early thirties, who don't really know how to fix up their own house, want to learn how to use tools, or older people who may not have the space to be able to do this, do something like that in their garage, but they want to have access to this kind of stuff. You can teach classes so that they can learn. Also, you've got the opportunity for local businesses to come in and supplement what the kind of machinery and capital that they have. So for example, Roland Carpenter is here, some of you may know him. He's the president and founder of Get It Industrial Marine on County Street. I was talking with him, and he was talking about how he has to send some of his fabrication work out to as far away as New Hampshire or Florida to get work done. A space like this would give him the opportunity where he wouldn't have to invest all that capital to build something new for himself. Instead, he would have a space in the community where he could go and do some of the work in there. That gives him a low-cost alternative, it gives him a chance to educate and train some of his employees, so that as business increases and grows, and he does want to build out his own space, his people have the skills, are ready to be able to use the tools that he wants to bring in there. Again, we're investing in people in doing stuff like this. This section of High Street, this Maker Square that we're calling, this is where we've already got some of the approved multifamily units. On the top left, that's the Woda Affordable Housing Projects, project on the bottom, the townhouse development that looks like it came straight out of Brooklyn. Across the street, we've got these old buildings here that, when you drive by, you would think that, well, this is kind of waste, we should tear this down and start over. In fact, these are a great asset to us. By having these existing buildings, you don't have to spend the money to build something new. You're doing something good for the environment by recycling existing stuff as opposed to building new stuff. You give the opportunity for people to come in and build out the inside in the way that works best for them without having to build a new building. So we have this idea of, say, the makerspace here. We've got an artist hall and studio. We've added a market hall so that people who are building things and producing things have a place to sell their stuff. There was a kid in Norfolk working out of a Norfolk makerspace. He was 18 years old. He decided he wanted to make candles that smell like breakfast cereal. Within two years, he was doing $2.5 million worth of business, just out of this makerspace. He then, he had to move out because he could not keep up with being able to sell. Well, if we had a place for him to sell, then that gives him the opportunity to stay right here. We've also got all of this existing open area to provide space outdoors for people to congregate, for people to have outdoor activities, maybe say music, or, you know, other social activities. These activities are where you give people the opportunity to interact in unexpected ways. You meet unexpected people, you have unexpected conversations, and all that unexpectedness is what leads to true innovation. You get these sparks, you get these new ideas that you weren't thinking about, you didn't anticipate, and all of a sudden, you're going off in a direction you didn't, hadn't thought about before, but that's where you figured out, like, that's where I need to go. This is the person I need to work with, that's the person I need to talk to. The way that this is designed encourages that kind of interaction. The Health and Wellness Square, moving down High Street, is a separate idea. We want to build on the success of the Hampton Roads Community Health Center to provide additional services to people here in Portsmouth. One of the reasons we want to do that is because we know that healthcare and social systems provide an incredible percentage of jobs here in Portsmouth. We're looking at, you know, about a quarter of the jobs being in, non-federal jobs being in those sectors. We also know that the incomes for those jobs are increasing at a high and incredibly steady rate. So these are types of jobs that we want to attract because they're well-paying, they have good benefits, and they can't be outsourced. By congregating all of these jobs in this one area, you're seeing this idea of complementary uses. You may notice when you drive down the street, you see a lot of fast-food restaurants congregated together, all kind of in the same place. That's by design. That tends to attract more people. It's a lot better to have a bunch of uses in one place than, say, you know, your typical generic suburban shopping center with a Target and a, you know, nail salon and a video game store. You know, it's all the same everywhere, but that's all that's there. There's nothing else around it. We want to have a more dense urban type of development here. So what could this look like? So you've got, is this going to work? Kind of. So we've got the Hampton Roads Community Health Center here, and we've got a lot of vacant or underdeveloped land along High Street that we could use to build more mixed-use type development. Excuse me. We can build off the connections with the existing social services, behavioral healthcare, IC Norcom again to the north. This opens up the opportunities for internships and apprenticeships with, you know, places like Norcom or TCC. Again, looking to the next generation that we can invest in to fill these jobs that we want to attract into the district. Finally, the MLK Gateway, this light industrial area. Our big recommendation here is, let's not do a whole lot. That's okay. We have existing single-family neighborhoods that can benefit from, say, increased canopy coverage, reduced speeds, and increased safety. And then, we've got this light industrial area around the MLK where we don't want to put housing under it, because, you know, people don't want to live under an underpass. But what it does do is it provides an opportunity for, say, people who are in this makerspace, if they become successful and they need a place to go, instead of moving to another city, they can literally just move down the street. So say this candle guy, right? Say he doesn't want to stay in the makerspace. Well, we've got these Quonset huts here that provide you like 1,000 square feet of usable space where you can rent for, again, not a whole lot of money, but you're helping to keep people that we've invested in right here in Portsmouth. It benefits them, it benefits us. The way to do that, we believe, is we want to make it easy to build what we decide we desire. So that might look like removing the use permit requirement for mixed-use development in the district. And I want to be very clear, when I say mixed-use, that does not mean multifamily. That doesn't mean that anyone who wanted to just build an apartment, we're looking at someone who's got that retail component on the first floor that supports the health office sector, right? Or the makerspace-type sector. We want to reduce parking requirements. Parking is great on Black Friday, it's terrible for everyone everywhere else. The idea of free parking does not exist. All of that stuff is being paid for by us. When you go to Kroger and you see the parking lot being 75% empty, we are paying for that because that's not land that's being developed. So that's not land that the people who own it can make money off of. So they turn that loss of money into increased rents and increased prices. We want to do the best that we can to reduce parking so that we have productive land uses. We know that banks are going to require parking, so let the property owner, let the developer and the bank figure out what's necessary instead of us telling them what to do, because what's going to end up happening is we're going to get smaller parking lots. We want to not only figure out the uses that we want to have, but there are uses that we don't want to have, and these are already in the Innovation District overlay guidelines. We don't allow drive-through right now on High Street. We don't allow convenience stores, or at least new convenience stores with gas pumps. But we do have to put in language in the zoning ordinance to allow new uses. We need to have makerspaces in there. We need to do a better job of defining what a commissary kitchen is. These are two examples of uses that we want to bring to the district. The commissary kitchen is one that people are actively looking to locate in Portsmouth already. Finally, we want to look at changing the boundaries slightly of the district. I don't know where these original boundaries came from, but they have survived multiple iterations of ideas out here. We need to kind of square this off and get a better feel for where we're actually trying to operate. On the west side of the district, we're looking at trying to bring in a little bit more of the light industrial area. And on the east side, we want to look at expanding down High Street, block across Effingham, so that we capture Bloom coworking. The reason we want to do that is because Bloom has been highly successful. They've already had to move out of their existing unit and move into a bigger space because of how successful they are. So let's use that as a catalyst to help increase excitement and activity in the district. We also know that we need to have leadership. This is not a short-term project. This is something that we're going to have to be focused on for a number of years ahead in order to be successful. The analogy that I've used is light rail in Norfolk. Now, say what you want, whether you like it or you don't like it, that's kind of irrelevant. The point is that, the reason it exists is because there is a councilman who spent 20 years badgering staff and said, "I want light rail," and because of his work, they got light rail. I'm not saying that this is your responsibility. What I'm saying is that I would like to see some sort of board, a commission, a committee, something of local community members and residents that are, that help us to implement the plan in the district, to help us identify things that are working and help us identify things that are not working, so that we can make the necessary changes to support people who are coming in here. I also hope that by serving on a board or commission or committee like that, we're helping to build leadership skills for the next generation of people, so we're not only looking at helping young people in terms of entrepreneurial skills, we're helping them become better active citizens, active participants in Portsmouth. Beyond the results I've talked about, this turned out fits perfectly with our comprehensive plan. I think that it's an easy argument to make that the results we could see out here fit with all four of our goals in the comp plan, that we be a thriving city, an evolving city, a resilient city, and an equitable city. So, I will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Swett. Are there any questions from our colleagues?
If it's not working, if it's not working, if it's not working, can we continue?
So if you just raise your hand, we're calling you individually. Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank the folks who participated in the Innovation District sessions. A lot of time spent going through a lot of this detail, and I appreciate the way that you've captured the ideas that were kicked around. A lot of the ideas that are shown here came from our citizens who sat in those sessions and offered ideas. One of the things I don't recall seeing was a discussion about how we leverage the Innovation District for our schools, our school-age kids. With Norcom right there, PPS has an entrepreneurship program, so with the makerspace idea right down the street, seems like there's an obvious opportunity to collaborate with schools.
Absolutely.
Have you all engaged?
Absolutely.
Have you all engaged Dr. Bracy's team or the school board yet?
Yes, a representative from the school system was at all of our stakeholder meetings. So they are aware of what we're doing, they have been supportive of what you're doing. Because like you said, can you imagine how great it would be if you had like a technology class at Norcom where you could just walk down to the makerspace to use the machineries and the tools that's there? So the school system would benefit by not having to put the money into it. We would benefit by having people coming in and teaching kids. Like, it's a win-win.
And then there was a lot of discussion during the meetings about zoning and, you know, what are the, how do we attract businesses who want to come plant in this neck of the woods? Can you talk to the zoning incentives that exist or that we might consider?
So no, zoning incentives currently exist in the district. The things that we are looking at recommending would be things like eliminating the use permit requirement for mixed-use development, increasing the height of buildings so that we start capturing, or that we make sure that we are allowing the types of buildings that we're seeing here in the city with something on the first floor, four or five stories up above it, looking at reducing parking requirements. All of these things both bring down costs and reduce uncertainty, both of which are incredibly important to businesses and developers looking to locate here in Portsmouth.
And I know when we considered the last set of zoning changes, one of the discussions we had was around density. I know we've adjusted the density in the Innovation District. Too early to tell whether we got that right or not, but I guess my point is with the investment funds that we have to create a better High Street, we just need to be thoughtful to make sure that the underground infrastructure is there to support whatever potential density we're hoping to attract into this area.
Agreed.
Okay, thanks.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, what's your name again?
Brian Swets.
Swets, okay. Thank you for, Ms. Swets, for the presentation. My question goes to these inner-city managers. Want to get clear again, as far as the funding that's available, did I hear the figure 18 million?
So we have won a grant for a little over $19 million from federal DOT, and a massive round of thanks to Senator Lucas for finding money in the state budget to, for $4.8 million, which the city would have been required to pay for the match for that grant. So as of the time of that, that this, the High Street project would have been entirely paid for.
So the, is the total 23.8 million?
Yeah, it's about right.
So, so my question becomes that those funds will not be available until, was it 18 months? Okay. You mentioned a lot of development that's going to be occurring along that corridor. There are a lot of citizens, businesses, that have not been a part of the mainstream development in this city, which was disclosed to us through our disparity study, both on the private and the public side. So when I see something like this, 23.8 million dollars, and I see a presentation like this that has a lot of ideas involved in it that will involve contracting, what I would like, if there's no objection from colleagues, is that of that, I think it needs to be made crystal clear to the citizens, we got 23.8 million dollars. Okay, how can those funds be used? Okay, how will they be distributed? See, it can't be, it's going to leave a lot of people out of the loop because they haven't been in the loop. And I think it needs to be a clear, and we have an 18-month period to educate the public through as many means as we can to let them know about these funds, how they will be used, what would be the process for obtaining these funds, what type of projects will be eligible for receiving? Because I'm just listening to this, there seems like a lot of renovation that's going to be taking place in some of these buildings along High Street. Is that correct?
We hope so, yes.
Okay, so who's going to be doing that? What's the process for how that's going to be done? I think it needs to be unbundled to let people see exactly what it is. I think it's good to present what's supposed to be there, but I'm more interested in how are these dollars going to be distributed? And if we do not have an intentional program in place to show how those dollars can be used, who can access them, what the process is, how would bidding take place, we're going to see the same type of results that we've been seeing in the past, that there's only a certain few in this city that tend to benefit from these type of dollars. And I want to, when I, when I see on your presentation equity, okay, to me, equity is not just doing things the same way that people are treated equal, but I think it needs to be a fair process so that we can all participate in those who would like to participate, that those barriers to them participating, that we try to alleviate those as much as possible. So it needs to be unbundled. I mean, this, you know, I know it's a presentation, but I think the economic side of it, it needs to be made crystal clear. Here's the money, here's what's available, here are projects, here's how you bid, okay, here's what you can bid on, so that we can change the landscape of what's happening, not only on the surface but economically.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Swets, for the presentation, and shame on me that I haven't sat down with you since the comp plan to come over this, but with this presentation, you got my attention now. I guess on the page where you were identifying the green-owned sections were city and the purple was economic development, and I guess, you know, how do you use this man lap to determine who gets to come to which areas? Do you, when somebody's coming and they putting out a use permit or they want to start a new business, do you direct them to this, or is it only certain type of businesses that will fit in here or, so that's?
Sure. So the traditional zoning still exists, so, you know, the rules for like what can come in and what can't come in, those still be the same with some tweaks that we want to make, like, for example, allowing the makerspace, allowing commissary kitchens specifically. We work closely with economic development. We view this as an economic development plan, so economic development will be helping, well, I should say, be doing most of the implementation of this. So they will be going out and helping to attract new businesses to the area. One of the things I forgot to mention when we were doing this in this, in the makersquare was the idea of a small business support center where we would have, see staff present to help people at all levels of business. So that could be people who are just starting out, who are looking to understand how to create a business plan, to people who are looking to figure out, you know, how do I market my product, to people who are looking to figure out, how do I get involved with contracting with the city? How do I work through the permitting process? So we've got, the idea is to have a person there, one, to attract business, but then two, to support the businesses that either we're attracting or that we're trying to grow in the district.
Okay. And then my next question is on the page, you mentioned that there was a district that was previously redlined and how, I mean, I guess that's going to be a council effort to create policy to make sure that we don't fall into that trap or that kind of situation again in the future with this?
Yeah, we're, like I said, you know, so redlining, you know, taking place back in the '30s and '40s, we still see that legacy today. So part of what we're trying to accomplish here is to overcome the results of that. And so, you know, the most visceral, the most obvious one would be, say, planting street trees. That would completely change the look of the district. It raises property values, it decreases temperatures, it does a whole, has a whole lot of, cleans air, it has a whole lot of positive benefits for the people who are currently living there.
Right. And then my last question is, the practitioner options are low in the city. The mayor and Councilman Tillage and myself were in a presentation this week with Centerra and Bond Secures, and one of the questions that I raised was the availability of some type of outpatient facility. And-
Mr. Hugo.
Councilman Hugo was there as well about having an outpatient facility here in the city of Portsmouth so that, you know, someone has a spring pinky or, you know, you know, something that they don't really need to go to a hospital for. Is that an opportunity to bring additional healthcare?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. So the Hampton Roads Community Health Center had multiple representatives at all of our stakeholder meetings, and we are committed to working with them to identify uses, healthcare sectors that complement and support the work that they are doing. You know, they said, you know, we, we, when I say we, I mean, they have certain things that they can do, but they also identify that their patients and their customers have other needs that they can't serve. So if we can bring those to them, then we bring, that kind of starts to feed on itself. You know, the more successful they are, the more they attract more business, the more business wants to come there, the more people we get there. It just becomes a self-perpetuating cycle.
Right. Okay. Well, thank you.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. A great presentation, Brian.
Thank you.
I think it's something to get excited about. It was mentioned about funding. To ensure that funding is there, obviously, to maintain and even expand the attractiveness and effectiveness of the project, has there been any discussion on a special tax district to ensure its own stream of revenue that's earmarked for that piece? The other thing, the threat to any worthwhile project, and I've seen a lot of good presentations and projects with a lot of merit end up gathering dust on a shelf. And you touched on it a little bit about the leadership, and the, I think it's important that we get this started so the public and the participants, and it becomes larger than anybody up here or any change in councils. I think that's extremely important. As you know, and I guess a lot of the public knows, one council can't bind another council to anything. So I think it's extremely important that the public, that we get the participation and make it attractive enough where people who have an idea would want to participate, you know, from a business standpoint, so it gets larger than the leadership up here. Your thoughts on that?
I agree with you completely, and I credit Jocelyn Terry Dumar, Planning Director, who has identified funds in our planning budget next year that we can use to help implement this plan. So, for example, I had a meeting with our museums director on Monday, and we were talking about looking at creating some sort of entity where we could invest in public artists. So if you think about, say, the Vibe District in Virginia Beach, they have something like 150 murals that have been painted over the last six or seven years that helped to really create a sense of place there, but these artists that they're paying are generally local artists, you know, people from the community. So if we can look at doing something like that, then, again, we're investing in our own local people, putting money into the community, but with funds that we already have identified, you know, in the planning budget or in the museums budget moving forward. This project, I said, is a planning and economic development effort, but we've had a ton of collaboration across departments and places that you wouldn't normally see, like sitting down with the museums director, for example. So this has been a really exciting thing to work on, and I think that there's a lot of people who agree with you and are looking to try to find ways that we can invest so that we keep this front and center. Budgeting is about establishing priorities, right, expressing our values, and that's what putting the money up says, this is something we care about.
Right. Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker.
I think the city manager was about to say that.
Madam City Manager.
Yeah, I just want to thank council for, and Brian, for the presentation, but because we did have a disparity study, and there is going to be a heavy lift to make sure and ensure that we meet the goals of the organization, I just want to say, it's a lot of work that we'll be putting into this to ensure we cross all our Ts and dot out all of our Is to ensure equity across the board. We have a lot of things that we'll be bringing before council as it relates to policy, as it relates to code changes and amendments. So I'm just, the whole purpose of bringing this to you now is to gear us up because we have a lot of work ahead of us, and I wanted to get this before you so we can start having those conversations because we have a lot to do to get us to where we need to be.
Is that before you speak, is, are there any other of my colleagues who want the floor at this time? Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
And so, so at our next council meeting, so that we make sure with what I was suggesting about presenting this information, can we see where we are plan-wise with how that's going to be marketed, presented to our citizens so that they can be aware of these funds and the bidding process? Just want to make sure we're, I know it's not going to be available till 18 months, but I think we can use that time period to put some things in place.
Yeah, if I could come in some of that with some recommendations, just some ideas. Like before, I bring things to you and you all give me your feedback. And again, a lot of this money is federal money, so I need to go back and see what it is that VDOT requires-
Right.
-so that we can build upon that.
Right, okay.
Because it is a grant.
Okay. And my second question, so in 18 months, 23.8 mil, somewhere between 19 and 23 million will be given to the city, like the ARPA funding, how will those funds be allocated?
I'm not sure if it's the one month or it's overtime. I think it's the five, reimbursable.
Oh, I see. All of this is reimbursable. Okay, okay, all right. And, oh, I'm sorry. And when, when we say reimbursable, across what time period is it reimbursed?
What's the years, is it a five-year grant? It's a five-year grant.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Swets, on behalf of you and the team, I just want to thank you guys for all of the sessions. I think they were very well attended, and I would encourage all citizens to pay attention. A lot of this stuff is advertised and put out, so please pay attention to what's going on because we need your input. We want to make this Innovation District something that's transformational, and I think with this kind of idea, we can do something very special in our city. When I was at the National League of Cities Conference, I had an opportunity in Atlanta, Georgia, to tour their Innovation District when I was there. I took the whole day to tour their Innovation District, and one of the things that stuck out to me, as you know, there's a rich history, African-American history in Atlanta, and in their Innovation District, they really made a huge emphasis on public art, right? And public art means a lot of things. There was a wonderful mural that told a story, but more importantly, standing public art as well. In addition to that, in the community, it was all integrated, even statues of some of the historic figures sitting on benches, which I thought was amazing. And we can incorporate those kinds of things. But to your point, right now, we have an organization, as you know, in the city of Portsmouth, a Support Public Art, and most of those are local folks who do their own work, they raise their own money. So I'm excited about the opportunity of bringing public art and the public art focus because art brings people as well. And also, when you have art, as you see some of the work that's going around the city with the Support Public Art effort, it really makes people say, wow, things are really happening in Portsmouth. And so I'm encouraged by that. Thank you for your presentation and continued to good work, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You have the floor, sir.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned Atlanta in our, in this discussion because, as you said, you were walking, you were visiting the Innovation District there in Atlanta, and I'm glad you're lifting Atlanta up because, as you know, Atlanta had a former mayor named Maynard Jackson, and Maynard Jackson was a strong voice, and so what you see in Atlanta to Maynard- And Maynard Jackson was a strong voice, and so what you see in Atlanta to Maynard Jackson leadership with making sure that there was equity and diversity in contracting. And so, you know, the artwork is good, but I think the economics is what's going to really impact our community. When you were speaking about redlining, you mentioned redlining, and you associated redlining with planting more trees to address redlining. I didn't, I wasn't following what that logic was.
So when we speak about redlining, we, a lot of times when we speak today, we think about the results of the redlining, let's say, the lack of investment into a neighborhood. One of the most popular, popular might not be the right word, but something we see in a lot of districts that were redlined back in the 30s and 40s is a lack of investment. And trees are a very visual way of seeing that a district has not been invested in. If you go, if you look at a map of redlined neighborhoods and you compare it to canopy coverage, there's a very close correlation. Neighborhoods that have more trees tended to be ones that were invested in, that the government supported back in the 20s, 30s, and 40s. Neighborhoods without trees are, tend to be places where government said, we will not invest there, and that legacy still haunts us today. So I'm not saying that planting trees is going to eliminate the legacy of redlining. I'm saying that it is an indicator of a neighborhood that had been, and that this is a way that we can start to address the impacts from redlining.
Yeah, I was hoping you weren't saying that trees will address redlining.
No.
But the reason I was bringing it up is in line with what the mayor brought up is, and what I'm bringing up about what happened in Atlanta, what happened there was intentional. They intentionally addressed issues, and unless, unless this council, city manager, intentionally addresses the disparities and intentionally addresses the socioeconomics that this type of funds is presenting to us, then the innovation district, what will go there, will not help to change any type of legacy of redlining unless we put in place intentional socioeconomic policies. And so I'm looking forward to hearing back from our interim city manager.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, Mr. Swets.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Go ahead, ma'am. You have the floor.
Yeah, I guess the question is to the city manager, if this is a reimbursable fund, I guess in the budget, we're going to have to identify where we're going to use this money out of to start the projects up in the meantime.
Excellent.
Okay. Okay.
Our next presentation is from the Tidewater Youth Services Commission. A representative will take, will come up and give us a overview, and I'm not sure if we all know that Tidewater Youth Services Commission is actually in our city, but I wanted her to give us some information and to make the council aware that they are there.
Absolutely. My name is Jenny Hodge. I'm the executive director of Tidewater Youth Services Commission. Thank you. And I actually just celebrated my five-year anniversary with the agency. I started as the executive director of our foundation arm, served as interim for the public side, which is the commission, and five years today. If you saw runners in your old town this past Sunday, the Santa Claus Shuffle, which you all had on your lovely list of things to do in Portsmouth, thank you for that, that was us. So Tidewater Youth Services is a public-private partnership between the commission as a public agency and our nonprofit arm, the foundation. Now, the commission was funded in 1977 through a cooperative agreement between seven localities in this region, and that cooperative agreement was formed to serve court-involved youth. So of all localities in the state of Virginia, receive block grant funding through the Virginia Juvenile Community Crime Control Act. And what those funds are supposed to be used for is your local court service unit, so your Portsmouth Court Service Unit, makes referrals to us for services for the youth that are in your city. That could be as a low-end spectrum youth in a diversion program. So we run the diversion program for the city of Portsmouth, and I'm happy to report that the last data that we ran for that particular program is that 80% do not receive new charges within a year of successfully completing that diversion program, which is good news, because that is keeping less kids off the street, less kids from escalating further into criminogenics and into the system. Unfortunately, at times, youth either didn't get caught or the crime they committed was at the home or in their community, and they have to be removed from the home, in which case the court would order them into one of our residential facilities, one of which is based here in Portsmouth. I don't know if you all are familiar with West Haven Boys Home. That is run, the program director is Carlos Hooker. Carlos is a legend in your court service unit and your Department of Social Services. He is a legend because Carlos doesn't turn any kid away, and Carlos does not terminate youth. Doesn't matter what type of shenanigans they may be doing or why they were brought there, Mr. Hooker believes in second chances. And so the youth that are placed with Mr. Hooker do come from around the region, but about 20% do come from Portsmouth, and they are there on a myriad of charges, an assault charge either at school or in the home, grand larceny, anything short of arson or murder. Gun charges, murder, arson cannot be placed into our residential group homes per the Department of Juvenile Justice. So partially why I'm here today is to let you know that our foundation was engaged in a capital campaign to do much-needed renovations to our residential facilities. West Haven has been at the same location since the commission was founded in 1977. It is at the corner of Race Street and Airline. I'm sure if you drove, drive past it, you have no idea that that's a residential group home facility for young men ages 12 to 17. Typically, there is 18 young adult men or young men in that facility, and typically, if they are placed in that facility, they will go to a Portsmouth school, even if they're from the city of Virginia Beach. I invite anyone that would like to come see the facility to please come and do so. I greatly appreciate that Mayor Glover and interim city manager, Ms. Terry, have been to the facility to see it. We run off of public tax dollar funding, those Virginia Juvenile Crime Control Act or your local CSA fundings, if it's a foster care youth. Those funds allow us to do general upkeep of the facility, but it does not allow for major renovations. 3515 Race Street, aka West Haven Boys Home, is a city-owned property, and I am grateful that you lease it to us for a dollar a year. Thank you so much for that. The building has not had considerable renovations, and it's to the point where to do any type of renovation would cost well over a million dollars. The last time we had a feasibility study was pre-COVID, and it was a million. I can only imagine what it would be now to be able to stay on that piece of land and that property. But despite the building, which, again, if you can just imagine for a moment, a 15-year-old boy that lost his temper and maybe got in trouble with mom, and doesn't, family doesn't have the resources for a private defense attorney or have really good insurance that could get them the assistance they need, they will end up in programs like ours. So that 15-year-old boy who just has some anger that he needs some help with, he needs some extra adults in his life, and the courts feel like he would be better served, and rehabilitation to be placed outside of the home, that's where they get placed with us. So your Portsmouth youth can be placed within the city. While he is placed at West Haven, the staff is who are the golden. Mr. Carlos and his staff do a wonderful job at the site and sound supervision that were required by DJJ. But what often doesn't get reported is the amount of pro-social activities we do with the young men, the amount of homework help, the amount of counseling sessions, the family sessions that we do in order for not only that youth to make it through their sanction from the court successfully, but we hope to not see them again, that they are able to return home, reconcile to their family, reconcile to their homeschool, et cetera, to not come back into the court system. If they do, we are ready and prepared to keep working on whatever the underlying issue might be, whether that was aggression, a mental health issue, or just not having appropriate outlets. Typically, West Haven has anywhere from 60 to 70 youth that get placed there on an annual basis. So if you have children, and your children grew up in your homes, and you can remember the crayon markers on the walls and the bouncing balls and just the accidents that can happen, multiply that by 13 to 14 teenage boys at one time, and there's going to be 60 to 70 of them that come through on an annual basis. There's been a lot of wear and tear on that building. It has the best outcomes out of any residential program we have. I can only imagine if we had the facility and a, a facility that truly matched the second chances that we're telling these young men you deserve and that you can achieve. That our environment shapes so much about who we are and what we are presenting them can match that. So. So thank you for allowing me to come and speak, and thank you.
Yes. What I would ask council is, I challenge you to view the facility and visit the facility and meet the director and what they do at the facility, because I didn't ask her to provide a visual presentation with the hopes that this would spark something to want to go and see where our kids are going and the challenges that they may face. And I really believe that if you have an opportunity to go there, that would definitely spark an interest in what they do, and they are an amazing group of people who work with our children. And so she's here today because there are some asks that will come along during the budget season, but I am absolutely asking an opportunity for council members to visit that site.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, Saiki, what's your name again?
Not a problem. It's Jenny Hodge.
Ms. Hodge. Okay.
And I will say, I'm a Portsmouth resident. I intentionally bought my house because our main office is also in Portsmouth with our non-residential programs. Any youth in the city of Portsmouth that has an ankle monitor on them, we're monitoring that ankle monitor, and we have counselors that are doing home visits three times a week, once a weekend. They're the crisis counselor, they're the intervention counselor, as well as that supervision counselor for community safety.
Yeah. I just wanted to be able to address you.
Absolutely.
And thank you, Ms. Hodge. The questions I have, first of all, how many residential homes do you have here in the Tidewater area?
So in the Tidewater area, we have two that are open at the moment. West Haven Boys Home, again, is here in Portsmouth. We also have the Crisis Intervention Home, which is our coed facility, which is at the Virginia Beach Ocean Front.
Okay. And so the percentage of, I would say, the percentage of Portsmouth residents that are in the West Haven, does that fluctuate?
It does, and it's a little tricky these days to truly pin down, because juvenile crime is so regional now, that a youth might be classified as a Virginia Beach youth only because they committed the crime in Virginia Beach, but they live in Portsmouth.
Yeah. Okay. And so as far as the funding, are you seeking it also from the other cities to help with the West Haven place? So you're going to other city councils as well?
Correct.
Right. Okay.
Because outside of, historically, outside of that Virginia Juvenile Crime Control Act, we do not receive any additional funding from the localities to provide the services.
Okay. So to our interim city manager then, so will that be a conversation you're going to be having with some of your colleagues as far as how they address funding this regionally?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So doing, so when it's time for the budget, it would be based on some type of regional participation in funding this?
Yes, they do. We're looking at all streams of assistance for them. We're looking at all different levels of funding that we could assist her. We actually are working with behavioral health care and social services just to see, because, again, there are some CSA funds, and we just want to tap into every source and resource that is available before we come to council. But I know that I didn't want council, I wanted council to understand that this was going to be a part of the budget process, once we determine what funding is available and what they can and cannot tap into, because it is housed here, and it is with some of our children.
Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Hodge, thank you very much for all that you do. I think your job is, it's a thankless job, and so I just want to thank you for that and the collaboration that you've done with the juvenile court system and also with Friends of Portsmouth Juvenile Court, that great, strong collaboration. I greatly appreciate that. My question is really not directed towards Tidewater Youth Services, per se, but I think that this conversation kind of segues us into our juvenile detention center situation that we have. About a week or so ago, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke and myself were able to attend a meeting with Judge Diane Griffin, and there Judge Griffin was able to express to us the, the very pressing, urgent situation that is occurring in our state right now, well, excuse me, in our city with the lack of a juvenile detention facility.
Correct.
And so while this organization is great for youth who have committed nonviolent, and when I mean nonviolent, I mean armed situations, we still have right now 17 juveniles that have committed very serious situations that cannot be placed in this facility. And so I think while we're having a conversation about how we're going to address this situation, I think we also need to begin those conversations. And Judge Griffin urged Vice Mayor and myself to really make council understand that it is the city's duty to find this detention facility, the detention center for the juveniles. So I think that we really need to press forward on that issue, and I'll bring this up in the council meeting later on on how we can have this conversation. But I would like for the city manager to be able to provide counsel and a report back on what the updates are as far as the plan for a juvenile detention facility for our violent offenders that are below the age of 18.
Thank you so much.
You've done a wonderful job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
And Jenny, if you would hold just for a minute, I do have something to say to you. So I've known Tidewater Youth Services for a long time, and particularly that building. It's been renovated. Many organizations have volunteered their time and their resources to assist you. Having just recently taken a tour again to refresh my memory, that environment is just not an acceptable environment. The work that you all do in that building is extraordinary, and how you touch those children with that space is just incredible. I mean, once people walk in there, just in the kitchen area alone, you can't turn around. You can't have two people in that area. The bunk beds are just all over one another, and you do, and your team does extraordinary work. Had a chance to talk to the young men in there and the counselors, and continue to do the work that you do. And it was my pleasure to participate in the Santa Shuffle on Sunday. I'm still hurting from that 5K, but it was worthwhile. 29 years of the Santa Shuffle, and we're proud of what you do in our city and proud of you taking care of our young people. Thank you.
Mr. Carlos does send his regret that he could not be here tonight. He is actually working the floor, so he is with the young men right now.
Great work.
The next presentation will be by the city assessor, Ms. Janie Culpepper.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council members, guests.
I'm here this evening to speak to you about the Portsmouth City Assessors Office and what we need to do in moving forward from where we are at this particular point in time. The City Assessor's primary task with valuing all real property within the city of Portsmouth in a fair and equitable manner in accordance with the Portsmouth City Code of Ordinances and the Virginia State Code. Seem to be having a little problem with this. Valuing real property is accomplished by several means. Neighborhood verification audits, these are to be completed every six years. Building permit audits, these are triggered by building permits that are issued by the building official's office. Unintentional audits, improvements that are discovered while performing building permit activities. Calls from citizens reporting improvements made by neighbors without permits, sometimes they're with permits, and the person calling is unaware that a permit has been issued. Sale study audits determine valid sales utilized and calculating overall valuations for individual neighborhoods. Building permit audit example, this is before an audit. This is, the address of this property is, let me see here, this is 3999 Banier Road. It is an industrial property that was originally in the super fund. Building permit work resulting in an increase in assessment of $1,907,830 or approximately 23,848 in revenue, with a new assessment of $4,319,670. This is an example of an unintentional audit. While working permits for miscellaneous items on Seaboard Court, two undocumented warehouses were discovered, resulting in an increase of $2,243,283 or approximately $28,041 in revenue. The new assessment was $3,696,340. Another intentional, unintentional audit example, while on the same street reviewing other properties after the warehouse found, to make sure that our data was correct, the marijuana dispensary was reviewed and inspected interior and exterior. The value was found to be incorrect, resulting in an increase on the property of $5,716,670 or $71,453 in additional revenue, with a new assessment of $8,059,640. Another unintentional audit example is this is at 3525 Elmhurst Lane. It's a new office building, concrete parking, metal garage were noticed on Elmhurst Lane during a visit to another property, resulting in an increase of $102,930 or approximately $1,087 in revenue, with a new assessment of $162,900. An example of an audit that was triggered by a citizen reporting improvements by a neighborhood, on the left you'll see the before, and on the right you'll see an after. And these particular people called us stating that there had been improvements made to this property without a building permit. After we went out and we took a look and we contacted the owner, we did indeed find out that there had been a dwelling addition between the garage and the residence, resulting in an increase of $20,680 or $25850 in revenue, the new assessment being $331,170. The work was done with building permits, but it was done during the COVID shutdown. And during this particular time, it was very difficult for the assessor's office to receive building permits and go out and do the things that were necessary because of the working Sale studies example, before, this is 2809 Arcadia. The original house was slightly over 700 square feet with an addition building, with an addition build, excuse me, with two additional bathrooms, one full, one half bath, a new dwelling size of 1,276 square feet. All work, foundation, framing, plumbing, electrical, HVAC, et cetera, were done without obtaining any building permits. The resulting increase was $128,540 or approximately $1,544 in revenue, with a new assessment Another thing that has come to our attention and is quite impressive are the environmental restoration sites and the super fund sites. During a sale study, we discovered that a 21-acre former Procter &amp; Gamble super fund site was assessed at $2,192,450, but it sold for $16,200,000. And is currently being reviewed for assessment reconsideration. The sale brought to our attention that numerous super fund sites have been remediated and are now for sale or being sold. The audit process, the goal is to audit every parcel in the city of Portsmouth during a six-year period. This standard is set by the International Association of Assessing Officers, which is recognized internationally as the experts on assessment. Currently, we have 34,950 real estate parcels within the city, 2,478 of which are commercial. Less than 5% of residential parcels have been audited within the past six years, and less than 7% of commercial parcels have been audited within the past six years. Approximately 450 commercial building permits are still outstanding to be audited. This is since July. We had pretty much caught up for the ones that I had told you about previously, but in addition to those that we have worked, we now have probably a little bit over 450 at this time. Audits are capturing undocumented improvements as shown on the previous examples. Sale study reviews and verification audits are required of the Virginia Department of Taxation. Sale studies results are used by state ratio analysis to ascertain each locality's entitlement for taxes levied against rolling stock railroads, pipelines, and public utility properties. We have made tremendous progress in implementing our CAMA system, the new Vision system that we started quite a few years ago. Up-to-date CAMA system using Vision software tools, they have all been installed. All property record cards have been transferred into Vision and are being cross-checked to capture and correct any data translation errors. All staff have been or are being trained on Vision and will be completing double entries into Vision and into Legacy Real Estate System. In addition to that, Vision will be sending a person here either the first or second week in January to do on-site training to make absolutely certain that all employees are well-versed in the use of the Vision CAMA system. The Legacy Real Estate System will be archived. There are several reasons for that. We want to make absolutely certain that any other department within the city still has immediate access to the data that we input into Vision, and this will be handled by IT. The IT department has been working extremely closely with us on this implementation. Public access to the property assessment records in Vision is scheduled to be available on the city website with an anticipated starting date of February 1st, 2024, at the following I'm going to address the staffing needs. One commercial appraiser utilizing one residential appraiser as an assistant are tasked with 2,478 commercial properties. We need one additional commercial appraiser. If approved, we would have two commercial appraisers responsible for 1,239 parcels each. Four residential appraisers are tasked with 32,472 parcels, which equates to over 8,000 parcels per appraiser. Residential appraisers should have no more than 5,000 parcels each. We need two additional full-time residential appraisers. If approved, we would have six residential appraisers responsible for 5,412 parcels each. In addition to appraisers, we need an additional administrative assistant. We currently have one full-time and one part-time administrative assistant. One of, if not the most important duty of the part-time administrative assistant is provided by the administrative assistant processing the exemption for disabled veterans. The requirement for this is that the total process, once it is received and approved by the Commissioner of Revenue by a law that was passed in July, is that these must be processed and completed through the Treasurer's Office within a 21-day period. Sometimes we receive a list that may have two or three, sometimes we have 18 or 25. We may have as much as eight years that we have to go back on to verify what is going on and what we have to provide to the City Treasurer's Office. Attached, the attached budget request shows line item increases and total office budgetary needs with corresponding explanations. I'm hereby requesting $421,601 budget increase to be approved by City Council. This is the current budget information, which is very difficult to read. The revised budget request is as stated. The totals are, what we did with the employees that we're requesting is we prorated their funds, that the funds that we're asking for are not for a full year. We estimated probably January the 1st, that may be unrealistic, but we felt like hopefully we could get those owned by them and get those done. We're also requesting contractual changes, and there's a reason in particular for that. The original contract for the Vision system included the Marshall and Swift Program, which is an estimated costing program, which is recognized internationally and is also recognized by all courts. They are considered the experts in this. When we checked the revised contract, there, it had been removed. I don't know the reason why, but I do know that we need that. We're also requesting the contractual increase because we want to obtain a company called TRP. TRP is the best in the industry for obtaining information for income and expense statements. They have access to all information that is supported by the federal government. We send out the income and expense statements once a year. We try to get them out by the end of October, so we can get them back in time to start working the income and expense. We are fortunate if we get back 10%. So it's very, very difficult to get the information. A lot of the information that we get, we really don't have a way to really know if it's correct or not. We are currently using TRP on a parcel that is unique to our city, and they are providing information to us to enable us to assess this parcel and have it ready for revow. The amount of value increase and the resulting tax is much more than an annual contract with TRP would cost. To go a little tiny bit further, just to remind y'all, if you will think back to the second quarter information that I sent you, which I do quarterly, to let y'all know what we have done in building permits and so forth, so you will have an idea of what additional funds we have been able to provide for you, other than what we had anticipated in the land book. The sale study audit was $4,750,360. That was a result of, we went back and we ran a sale study from January the 1st, 2023 through July 31st. There were no sale studies that had been done in a number of years. In addition to that, we had field audits that were $3,237,550. So the need is there, and this is just an example of what we are able to do with the proper personnel. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ms. Culpepper. Are there any questions for my colleagues on council? Councilman Hugel, you have the floor, then Vice Mayor Lucas Burke.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Ms. Culpepper, for this insight into what's been going on in your office. Couple of questions. So it appears that most of the unintentional audits are the result of improvements that get made without building permits. I wonder, so there must be some process where when CO gets issued, that you all get notified that building permits are done, and now it's time to put the facility on the tax rolls?
We are supposed to receive them.
Okay.
We don't always receive them. Some of these people who have done unintentional improvements don't require a CO because they already have a CO. They're already operating, they're open for business and doing business. So unfortunately, the building permit office does not even know that it's going on. So not only is there the possibility of poor construction habits being done and there'd be a problem there, but also the city is not getting, is not receiving the fees that they are due for building permits. A number of years ago, there was a plan in place where the trash collectors, if they noticed, say, a dumpster out in front of a house, or they noticed construction going on, and they didn't see a building permit, they would notify the building permit office, and they would send someone out to notify that. I don't know if that's still going on or not. I know during COVID, it was very, very difficult, and I do know that we are beginning to reestablish a close working relationship with the building official, and we hope that that will continue so that we can stay in constant contact over exactly what's going on. So when we find things, we can let them know, and when they find things, they can let us know.
So in the cases where you find things, are you notifying the permitting folks?
Yes, sir, we are.
And so, Madam Interim City Manager, when permitting gets notified, hey, there's something that's happened here, and it doesn't appear there was a permit, do we go back with inspectors to make sure that what's happened actually meets code?
Yes, actually, I've been on walks in the community where we have people putting on additions while we're walking through the neighborhood, and we're finding that they don't have a permit. So we put a stop work on them. But just to speak to this, we at the city have not had a system that speaks to each others in all the different departments. We're exploring a system. We actually have identified a system that we are looking to implement as a part of a MUNIS system. So it's a module within the MUNIS system, but we have gone for years without having any technology that has allowed us to speak to each department, so these things. A lot of stuff happens because of process improvements. And so we've identified that process, that particular system, that will improve our process. Again, that's another reason I had come to council and asked for during the new budget season a director position for permitting. We have a lot of work to do within this city. And so this would address, I would say, about 60% of that issue and that need.
It seems like we're depending on you all and you all to drive around the city on an Easter egg hunt, looking for
Just like trash.
Things that are going on, and finding them after the fact, and then backfilling with doing the right thing.
In all of our departments, we were dealing with, remember, at some, when I have come to council and say we were dealing with vacancies. So again, it's one of those situations where we say, we need the work done, we're expanding We're expanding, but we were at a... We had skeleton staff. So when I look at inspections and when I look at our permits office, I think we only had one or two people that were dealing with new construction, and that was someone who really wasn't versed in that area. So we're having... I'm having to shake the tree loose to see what is going on in these departments so we can address the processes and then build up the department for where we're going. Because I think where we were staffed was good for that environment, but we are doing more and more construction. We're doing more and more in the city. So we're having to look at what did we do wrong and how we move forward. Even now, our inspectors, when they go out, they don't have iPads. They don't have computers. They're having to write it down and come back to the office, do paperwork when they should be on-site, putting it in a system and base that system would then trigger to every department so they would know. And again, that's... I didn't mean to rant, but those are the things that I'm identifying at every department. And if we can't... When we get permits, inspections, and zoning secure, then that's gonna eliminate 60% of our issues.
Yeah, so kind of going back to the mayor's earlier comment about our trip to Atlanta, one of the things that we saw at the National League of Cities Conference was an exhibit hall floor full of technology to do exactly the kinds of things we're talking about, equipping city staff with tools that gather the data, park the data in a place where everybody can use it. And so I know the mayor and I have talked about...
Yeah, we finally... We've identified... We've actually gone to other localities, the right people, and sat to see what systems there they are using and how and what they like about it, what they don't like about it. Does it fit our need? Because there, we can sample what we need without having to invest in something that doesn't fit our need. And so we've actually identified what... And so I'm working with Cliff Hayes, the IT Director, for implementation of that system. So that's... It's in the works.
Okay. So back to the budget request. So there's a staffing element here. There's a kind of an other element, contracts and travel and training and whatnot. Recognize that you weren't the assessor when this year's budget was assembled, and so it's not surprising to me that you found some needs, particularly given that we're so far behind in neighborhood audits. So I know that you're involved now in the budgeting process for the coming year. Would you speak to the consequences of not approving this budget request in terms of your ability to catch up in the areas that you've presented?
Well, the consequences are we have a limited amount of personnel to cover the amount of parcels that we have. So what's going to take place is our audit count is going to go down. What we're able to discover in audits, which is taxable parcels. We will not be able to do neighborhood audits. One of the best things about doing a neighborhood audit, aside from discovering things that are done without building permits, is we see for sale signs. When we see a for sale sign, one of the requirements is that we get the address down. And when we come back, we pull up the listing that they have, and we compare the listing to what we have on our property record card. And many, many times, we will find that these properties have been totally renovated. They have a larger bath count than what we had. We currently have them with a different type of heating system. We may have them with no central air conditioning. So if we don't have enough personnel to do the job, then we're going to be missing these types of things. Can we muddle along as we are? Yes, sir, we can. We certainly can.
Yeah, so muddling along means we miss things. And when we miss things, then we're under... Probably under-assessed more often than we're over-assessed. And if we get assessments correctly and fairly decided, then ultimately, that's revenue that we collect in property tax. Madam Interim City Manager, I know you have seen this coming. Have you looked for where in the budget we would find the money to fund the need out of Hyde?
No.
Okay.
And I'll tell you why. I'm at year-end, and I'm trying to get through audit. So may... As when we close out year-end, if there are funds that I can reserve for this year, then I'll bring that back to council, but I have to identify the needs. And so I would hope to be able to do that. If it is the desire of council to identify those needs, then I would bring some... I would send you a report back and identify what those funds would have to be.
Yeah, so if it's our consensus to do that, I'd like to see you consider this budget need in the end-of-year needs.
Yeah, it looks like you want to... You need this for '23, and then this would be a continuation into '24 because it doesn't go...
This would take us until through the end of June to the new budget.
This would be the rest of June, and then the budget would reflect that for '24 plus whatever needs she has.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Okay, so I just want to be clear on... Was there an ask-for consensus?
Yeah, I'd like to get consensus, my colleagues, to ask the city manager to look for the $421,000 that the assessor needs to staff and cover her other contract needs.
Okay, we have an ask-for consensus. Good.
Mr. Mayor, can we have some discussion before the consensus?
Absolutely. I know the vice mayor was next to have the floor, so vice mayor and then Mr. Moody, and then Mr. Councilman Barnes.
So one of my questions I can then eliminate because it was regarding the $421,000 budget line item as well. So we're working on that. But I guess during the auditing periods, the building permits audits and the unintentional audits, we saw that there were some increases in assessments and also some increases in revenues back to the city. I guess how soon will we realize that? How soon will we see that to be until the next year? We won't see that until the next year, so that's that issue. And I guess the next thing is when you find these unintentional audits where people have built a whole new house onto their current property and haven't been assessed appropriately, I know there's a stop order that's done, but if it's already done, are there any fines or any increases that is placed on the property owner or the landowner when those situations are identified?
We immediately put them on the next quarter billing. As far as any fines or so forth, you would have to talk with the interim city manager because I'm not familiar with those at all.
Codes and inspections. All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Well, it was mentioned, you know, to identify the need. I think the assessor identified the need in the figures that less than 5% of the residential properties have been audited in the past six years and less than 7% of commercial properties have been audited in the past six years. I think it's important to realize that when she puts personnel on the street to identify assessment opportunities, those folks, in essence, are generating income for the city. It's not every hire that can really identify how much income they're producing for the city or how much value they can produce. You know, her auditors certainly have income that they produce by identifying the audits. So I think it... I agree with Councilman Hugel that I think we need to approve her request and so we can do that. My other question is on the additions that are being done, and I know stop work orders are issued, but what penalties are assessed in those situations?
Well, I don't have that answer for you right now because there's steps. Because a person can say, I just did this yesterday. There's a timeline. So there's a level of work that has to be done to identify.
Well...
We have the amount, but there is $150, but...
Yeah, $150. That's not... That's not going to deter anybody from...
It's not for all...
It would be better to give you a response and a report back because, again, that's not for everything and that's not for all violations. That's just one of the things that they get charged with on a list of things of being out of compliance because there may be a structure that they built that they may have them tear it down because it was not structurally sound or it was not... It did not meet code. So there are several things that have to be addressed.
Well, I ask the question because I think those penalties and what's allowed and what's not allowed isn't done evenly. So I think at the proper time, I think council needs to be briefed on that process and to make sure it's doled out in a fair, equitable manner. Because right now, it's not. I could cite some examples, but I won't. But in addition to that, it's pretty well-known in Portsmouth in the construction industry that if you do the work interior on the weekends, more than likely, it's going to go undetected. So that's another area that we need to address. How are we going to monitor that and identify those opportunities? Because a lot of it goes on. If you ride around the city and notice on the weekends, there's a lot of weekend projects going on, and I dare say that many of them probably don't have building permits. So just another opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
I'm going to be brief because a little bit of what I was going to ask has been answered. I am curious to hear... One, I don't know if we should be actually passing this tonight or looking at going into it tonight because we are in the process of hiring a city assessor. So we need to make sure that we get that process taken care of to see what their recommendations are first. Also, five of you on this council hired our interim city manager, so I think it's important that we get her recommendation. I don't know if she has it tonight or she has to look more and she can give it to us and a report back. But I think before we make any decision, we need to get her recommendation regarding this issue and these new positions and this new money that's been... That we want to be added to the budget. Again, especially since five of you guys hired her for her expertise. So we definitely need to get that opinion first.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, Ms. Culpepper. First of all, Councilman Hugel mentioned that you found some of these needs that were in existence. The one commercial appraiser, two residential, and one administrative assistant. How long have these positions been in need?
They have been in need for quite some time.
Right.
The previous assessor...
Yeah, that's the point that...
The previous assessor...
You answered my question. You answered it. That it's been there for some time.
That's correct.
And that's the point that I'm trying to make here that this wasn't found by Ms. Culpepper. The previous assessor raised issues to council about personnel needs. Also, there were needs that were spoken to about software. And I can see that, again, we have this camera issue that has not been resolved here in Portsmouth, whereas in other cities, they have successfully implemented their camera system. And some of that has to do significantly with the technological skill training that persons bring to be able to implement those type of systems. My point that I'm making here is that there was a lot of accusations that were made about the competency of the previous assessor. And there was quite a bit of hysteria made and comments that were made here on council about competency. And I think it's unfortunate that that type of label was placed on Mr. Doris, who, in talking to other appraisers and persons and associations across the state, they spoke very highly of his skill level. What this shows is that it wasn't so much of Mr. Doris. It was that he was facing the same issue you're facing, and that is the office is understaffed. And I think what has occurred is that persons on this council use that for political reasons. And I think that we did a disservice to Mr. Doris in that regard. If it's additional personnel that's needed to do the job, then when you came before council and made comments about observations that the city assessor's office didn't make, well, how could the city assessor's office have made those observations when you yourself just said tonight that if you don't have these persons, then some audits can't take place? And so, for example, in your report here, you have that there are approximately 450 commercial building permits that outstanding... That are outstanding to be audited. And so when you say there are 450 commercial building permits that are outstanding to be audited, how long have they been outstanding?
These particular ones, we were caught up on our commercial building permits as of July 1st. And these are commercial building permits that have been received by the assessor's office and have been gone through. And as a result of that, there's still 450 that have not been done. But if I may elaborate on this, if I may, sir?
Yeah, I was just curious. How long have they been outstanding?
Well, we were caught up as of July 1st, sir. So it's as of July 1 or 2nd or 3rd or 4th. So one of the things that we discovered is that a lot of the parcels were coming out of the super fund site and out of the state process. So there is so much money and so much value involved in industrial property that the commercial building permits that were, say, very minor and that would more than likely not contribute a lot to the value of the property, it was thought that the best thing to do, and it was my decision to make, was to do a thorough investigation of these parcels that are out there and determine if they are, in fact, taxable now that they have come out of the super fund site.
Right. Ms. Culpepper, let me just say... I don't have an issue with what you're speaking to. The issue that I'm raising is that, and is part of this council, that there was a disservice that was done to the previous assessor in trying to... And I know that's not her... I'm not putting it... I'm not... I said that was a council...
Mayor, point of order.
What is... There's a point of order on the floor, sir. What is your point of order?
My point of order is that Ms. Culpepper has nothing to do with it.
And I know she does. I'm not putting that on Ms. Culpepper.
She has nothing to do with the evaluation of her predecessor.
I'm not putting that on Ms. Culpepper.
And the predecessor, you know, it's up to this council to evaluate any appointee in a closed session.
I'm not evaluating anyone.
So that... Mayor, that's my point of order. That's not Ms. Culpepper's purview.
Thank you, sir. With that point of order, any information regarding a former employee really isn't relevant to this discussion, what we're talking about today. So I'm going to accept that point of order.
Right, so let me finish my train of thought.
You, you can finish your, your train of thought.
Because what I'm speaking to is a council issue. I'm not speaking so much to evaluating, and I'm not saying, I'm not putting this on Ms. Culpepper. I'm saying that this council acted inappropriately in that if this is the need that she is submitting to council of $421,601, that need didn't just jump up overnight. And if that is existing and it has been existing, then it would be hard for any assessor to be successful in this position if it is understaffed. And so, I'm saying that this service was done in trying to put it on competency. It wasn't competency. It was that the office isn't staffed properly. And it should be staffed properly. I agree with that. But, let's not use our political positions to degrade people.
Sir, if that's your final.
That's the point that I'm making. My second question, Ms. Culpepper, is that if it is, okay with my council members, would like to have a report back regarding all of the abated properties, all of the properties that have been abated in the last five years. All properties that have received an abatement in the last five years. Address, the owner, the amount of the real estate tax that should have been charged, and the amount that was abated. And so, if, if council, if, there's no objection, if we could get an abatement report on properties that have been abated in the last five years with information on the address, the owner, the amount of the real estate tax that should have been charged, and the amount abated.
Sir, I, I need to confirm something. When you ask for abatement, are you asking for a consensus from council?
No, no, I'm not asking for a consensus on that. I'm asking, just like we would do for any other, like our city attorney, we ask for a report back. I'm just asking for a report back from the city assessor on properties that have been abated in the last five years. And in that report, please include the address, the owner, the amount of the real estate tax that should have been charged, and the amount that was abated. I'm just asking for a report back like we do with any other appointee.
Okay, sir. And, and what is the purpose of that request?
Because I would like the information, and I think it's relevant information for council. Why are you scrutinizing why I would want a report back?
Well, sir, the reason why, I'm just trying to clarify.
Nothing to clarify. I'm asking for direct information. I'm asking for an abatement report for the last five years on properties that have been abated. The address, the owner, the amount of the real estate tax that should have been charged, and the amount that was abated. That's as clear as I can make it.
Very good. Thank you for making that clear. And to, to your point, we still would need a consensus from council to move forward with that request?
We don't take consensuses on, when we ask the city manager for a report backs and the city attorney, we don't get consensus on that. Why you so, why you, why you're so against getting an abatement report?
Sir, I'm not against getting, I'm against, I'm, I'm following the process. So, that's why I recommended, in order, in order for us to follow the process.
And have arbitrary processes.
Well, we're having a consensus vote on the other request. So, why wouldn't we require a consensus on that one?
I'm asking for a report back. I'm not sure what.
Okay, so, you're asking for, he asked for a report back too. So, I was just trying to understand. The, the, the Councilman Hugel is asking for a report back.
I don't know if he did need a consensus.
Yes, yes, we do need a consensus for that. Sir, sir, Councilman Hugel, you, you asked for a report back, did you not? And you asked for a consensus, and I asked for a consensus for that particular item?
I did ask for consensus from my colleagues to ask the city manager to find the funding to cover the budget need for the assessor's office, yes.
But, that's, that's not a report back.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a, that's an action he's asking the city manager. I'm asking for a report back, just like we would do for the city manager and the city attorney.
Okay, so, Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
So, do I need to ask for a consensus to get the, the, the city manager's opinion on this?
No, that's, 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 that's not an item in which you need to ask a consensus for. But, but, but this particular item, it was, I, I asked some specific questions so that we could be clear on what the ask was for. And as a result, I, I asked for consensus to ensure that we were, we, the majority of council, wanted to make sure that information was provided. That was simply what the request was. That's all. And, and, and it just requires just the majority of council. There's nothing that really needs to go into it further than that, sir. So, let, can we, can we please deal with the first item? And then, we can call for the consensus for the city assessor to bring back the requested information from our colleague. Is that fair to everyone? Okay, so, Mr. Hugel, would you please state your consensus request?
Yeah, I'd like the consensus, my colleagues, to ask the city manager to identify the funding in this year's current budget to cover the $421,000 budget increase that the city assessor's asked for in her brief tonight.
Thank you, sir. And could I see, please see a show of hands? Go, go ahead, sir.
To the city manager, would it, would it be better if we got your opinion first before we got this consensus for you to go look at it or after?
So, I could actually put it in my report back what my recommendation is. It would still have to come before council to, to approve the amount of funding along with an ordinance that would have to move those dollars. Is that fair?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, the second item.
Do we have a consensus?
Well, we still, we, we still need a show of hands with the consensus. Now, the second item, the consensus. Dr. Whitaker, would you please state it one more time, sir?
Request that the city assessor provide an abatement report covering the last five years, showing the address, the owner, the amount of the real estate tax, and the amount that was abated.
Thank you, sir. We have a request for a consensus. If we could please show the consensus for this item by a show of hands? Thank you.
So, did we get a consensus?
Yes, yes, we, we had a number. Ms. Culpepper?
Sir.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Culpepper at this time? Seeing none, then, thank you, ma'am, for your presentation.
You're welcome.
And ladies and gentlemen, we, we, and my colleagues, we do have a need to go into a closed session. And I apologize for the delay, but this is a very important agenda item. And so, we'll move in that direction. Is that okay with you, madam, madam interim city manager? Madam vice mayor, would you please read the closed session motion?
Yes. I move to go to, into a closed meeting A pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.23711A8 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel employed by the city regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel specifically regarding collective bargaining. And B pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A5 for the purpose of discussing the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in expanding its facilities in the community.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugel?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
Thank you.
We are in closed session. Certification of our closed meeting. And, madam vice mayor, would you please read, read the motion?
Yes. I hereby move that each council member certify that to the best of his or her knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting just concluded.
Thank you, ma'am. I would ask my colleagues to please vote electronically.
The motion is adopted 7-0.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes our closed meeting and our work session. We will recess for, until 7:30, at which time, we will start our regular council meeting.